All right, so I guess we'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the republic which is the stand one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks. All right. Sorry about running a little late here. But I think the technical difficulties are resolved, so we'll start off. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, all right, and
Actually, as I'm looking at this.
We have a change to the consent agenda.
A change to the consent agenda, right?
Yeah.
We can wait till then?
We can wait till then.
Yeah.
Okay, any, that's it though? Okay. Um. So Nick, do you want to go over your spiel about how people can do comments?
Yeah, of course. So we have, so we're officially in public comments. There is two sessions, one now, one toward the end of the meeting. There are three ways in which you can make a public comment. The first is that there is a Zoom group chat feature. You can utilize that in order to send a message. Please include your name and your address and town, and then the message, and then I will read it so that everybody can hear it. You know, we can have it as a part of the public record. Under the Participants tab, there's also a way in which you can raise your hand. If you would like to raise your hand so that I can acknowledge you, that is the way that you would be able to audibly say whatever it is that you want to say. So I can unmute you and then we can re-mute. And then the third way, which you could put a public comment is, is you could send me a text message which would go to 603-933-0973. And I will send a message to everybody just with that number so that everybody has it. So those are the three ways in which you can give a public comment if you, you know, are partway through the meeting and you wish to, you know, put something in the queue for the second public comment session, we can, you know, read it at a later point, so.
Okay, thanks Nick. So at this point, do we have any public comments?
I currently have nothing. Let me just scan the no hands raised. I'm not getting any messages on either text or chat, so I think for right now, we're good to go.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, time for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Marcia. So, no secret that this past week, things continued to change. So on Thursday, the governor announced that we were going to be in remote learning for the remainder of the school year. And so along with that decision brings a lot of local decisions that we have to continuously look at or continue to look at together and to make the best possible decisions going forward relative to the end of the year, whether relative to, you know, just even the summer program that we're going to do, whether that's going to be done remotely through ESY, whether we're going to be able to do anything with small groups during the summertime. There's just a lot to think about. Those are the questions that are out there. No one has the answers to those. If you talk to the commissioner, it's just really, his advice is plan for all scenarios. So, right now, we're having conversations to plan out how we're going to be moving forward even after the school year has been completed. That brings up the conversations that we've been having relative to the calendar for next year. Certainly, we still have time for that. The next year doesn't begin until the fall, but wanting to make sure that we have the best, the best calendar going forward that's going to meet the needs of our families, our teachers, the district in general. And so earlier this week, or this, you know, this past week right here, we had a meeting both in the JREA contract. The association has one group of people meet, one from each school along with some administration, and we discuss the calendar and some, any adjustments that we think, any input that we think would be good. And then we go back and we talk some more and then we end up having another conversation as well, certainly as we take some time to get input from our constituencies. Now, the calendar that you'll see tonight, we'll talk about it a little bit later, is a little bit different than the first draft calendar. So this is called the Draft 2 calendar, if you want to think of it that way, just another draft. And this calendar brought forward brings a different line of thinking than the original one. Most of it stays pretty much the same within the ideas of having the winter break, the spring break, and so forth. But what this one does, the feedback from the teachers was that we really, they really wanted to make sure that we presented a calendar that was in the best interest of everyone, and that meant not proposing a calendar that got us late, out late in the June. So the first calendar we had was perhaps mid to late June and getting out. By backing up the calendar about a week, it allowed us to present a draft calendar today that would get us out a week prior to what we had suggested in the draft last time. Now, what that does when we look at that new guidance along with our need to make sure that we're following our agreements with the CTE schools, so that would be Maceenic and Conville, we find that it would cause us to start in earlier time, about a week before the other two schools start, yet it would keep us in line with Maceenics' end date and that we would end around the same timeframe. So our school year really wouldn't be off the mark of our partners that we are, that we have agreed to work with. For that matter, actually, something that we really didn't discuss much was that we've made some changes to the CTE program at our school, the Building Trades, just basically in the content of the coursework, less having to do with carpentry, more having to do with a broad view of all the trades, like plumbing and electricity and carpentry and so forth. So, starting a little bit later, another week, you know, maybe a week later, to make sure that we're all starting on time, would not be a horrible thing for us if we were to choose down the road to go with the calendar that would, or something like the calendar that we present tonight. Again, after our discussion tonight and the conversation we have around that, the administrative team, which comprised of myself and Kelly Markot, will meet with the association group that we met with prior to that, prior to this week, and discuss any other changes or anything else that we feel we would want to see moving forward.
Okay.
The, going apart away from the calendar, we've certainly had a month full of events. Everything's been very fast-paced. Some of the committee work that we have been doing, like in the facilities, for instance, we've been keeping up with a lot of the facilities committees, maybe even increasing some of those committees. We've had more board meetings recently. We have had fewer meetings of some of the committees. And so we're going to be getting the Education Committee up and going with the end of the month, maybe beginning of this coming month, if we can find the right date. And the elementary administrations will be talking during that time regarding the remote learning experience. And then we'll get into a groove thereafter. The, tomorrow, myself, Kelly Markot, the principal from RMS, Susan, the principal from JGS, and also Nicola will be meeting for another meeting with Franklin Pierce University Education Department just to continue our exploration of any partnership developed that might be able to take place in your future or years down the road. And that is what I have for the report tonight.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Ruben?
Ruben, um, the academy established for the teachers.
Leadership Academy.
Leadership Academy. That was scheduled to work through this spring, right?
The Leadership Academy is, yeah, working through the spring and actually the summertime. There are two courses in the summertime, both will be largely online.
Okay, so they've moved, they've also moved to remote learning.
Right now, yeah, they've removed to remote learning. Some of, some of it was anyway, but they've had to adapt their curriculum and their schedule to better meet the needs of our teachers during this timeframe.
Thank you.
All right, and John, you said you had something? Hold on, you're muted, John.
Takes a little bit to switch something off.
Or on.
He might be having some technical issues because I'm not able to get him
So John, can you go to
Okay, so I, I will promise not to mute myself again. I forgot that this was an issue with these meetings. For some reason, other Zoom meetings I've been able to mute and then unmute, but I recall now from our last board meeting that that's not something I want to do. Ruben, I wanted to ask you about special education and how that's working. I, I heard that for special educators in particular, there are some cases where actual in-person meetings have been held, and I imagine that it's been a real challenge whether or not that's true. But I imagine it's been a real challenge for the special education people, and I wondered if you could give us any kind of a input on that.
He's also muted.
Muted.
All right, so I did the same thing that John did. I didn't, but before you said, I shouldn't have muted myself, so I was like, okay. So I texted Nick and told him to unmute me. So the special education, we, we are, we are not doing the in-person work. To my knowledge, there are some schools that may have done some. The, the bulk, really, the bulk of the state as I know it really hasn't gone that avenue, but according to the commissioner, there has been some of that work that's been done. I can say that my reports that I get back from Jen is that we're doing actually very well with our services, our providing of services, that the concept, of course, we never know what, until this is all over, whether we will have compensatory services that we'll need to provide, but right now, it will not, that will necessarily be the case. We, really, the structure that we have right now with our teachers and with our use of our instructional associates has been going very well and has allowed us to really provide a very strong, a very strong program for all students. And in particular, to your question, those students who have special needs. So we feel very good about the programming that we're doing. I know that it's continuously changing day to day as to, you know, making certain that we're providing what they need, also making sure that students are engaged in what's going on and we're following up with them, you know, whether it be through mediums like this, like Zoom or on the phone just to keep them engaged with things. So I feel pretty good about what we're doing. Our teachers, just in general, I'll be honest with you, our teachers have been absolutely remarkable through this experience, not just our teachers, our instructional associates, all of our employees, but the ones who are the, who are mostly engaged with our kids day in and day out. Our teachers and our instructional associates have just done an amazing job. They've, you know, I, I'm not going to compare what we're doing to other districts because that's not what we need to be doing, but we've had a lot of good. I've had a lot of nice emails that have been sent my way relative to the strength of what our school district has provided. And sometimes there's some comparisons to think, you know, other places in other states or maybe around the state or what have you. So I'm really pleased to, with our administration, with our teachers, with our instructional associates. Our secretaries are doing a great job, and certainly our custodians and maintenance are doing a great job in the buildings as well.
Right, so I want to check in with the board members that I don't have visuals on, both Patty and Charlie, because I don't know, and then Laurel, I see you have your hand up too. So Patty?
Patty's unmuted, so I'm re-mute.
Sorry, I remembered too late also. It is a setting in, deep, deep in Zoom that Nick can undo, but, um, no, I, I really thank everybody for their hard work and there's still a lot more to do. It's awesome though, great.
Okay, thanks Patty. And Charlie?
Yeah, same here.
Okay, all right. And then Laurel, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you. So Ruben, it's, thank you for that addition to your report, and it's, makes me happy to hear about all the good work that's going on. Could you clarify a little bit how we are servicing those students who were out of district and that I assume are no longer out of district?
Sure. I believe that some students are receiving some supports still from their out-of-district placements remotely, and then we have filled in where we can to make sure that we're providing the services. To be very precise, I couldn't be super precise with you right here and now. But there's, it's a blend between the district and the providers who are working with our districts that we're paying for.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So I guess we're ready to move on. I glanced a little bit ago. It's time for the student rep report, but I didn't see them on. Nick, have they joined?
I see.
Patrick.
Patrick, so I can add him right now.
He says he's here.
All right, so Patrick should be live and able to talk.
All right, Patrick?
Hear me?
Barely.
I'm sorry if my mic isn't that good. Um, is there anywhere I can share my screen with you guys?
I think Nick can arrange that.
I have a, I have a Google form here for the digital events that you guys asked us to do. For the events that we could do digitally as like, as like a school.
That was fast.
It's nothing, it's nothing much. It's more of just you ideas me and Antonio came up with and then a suggestion box.
Good place to start.
So how are we doing there, Nick?
I'm trying to work on something right now.
Okay. Is, Patrick, is it something that could be emailed?
It is something I could email.
So Nick, if he emailed that to you, maybe then
Yeah, that would probably be the quickest way. Wasn't, I wasn't prepared to
All right, you know his email then, Patrick?
Just like any other
Same formula, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the chat now too.
So maybe we could take care of the consent agenda and then come back to
Come back to that? That's a good idea. All right, so
So I have a, I have an addition to the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
I need to find it.
Okay.
It's a budget transfer for $33,000 from various salary and benefit line items to professional services. I'm sorry, contracted services for the SAU, and it is for the work to put a door between SAU and the school. A fire door and security, right?
Right.
I think it should be 35,000.
It is, it is 35.
It's 35,000. I misread the form, sorry.
Okay. So Laurel's suggests that we add that to the agenda, so a motion, I think, don't we do?
I move we add a budget transfer for $35,000 from various salary and benefit line items to contracted services for the SAU for the installation of a security door and modifications to a couple of offices. Did I say the amount? $35,000?
$33,000.
I'll second her motion.
Okay. All right, thank you. And all those, well, this goes on the consent agenda. So are there any other changes to the consent agenda?
I would like to call the meeting minutes for April 6th, public.
And non-public.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So with these changes, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Right? Thank you, John. Thank you, Charlie. All right, and roll call vote. All those in favor? Heidi? Patty?
Yep.
Laurel?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I say yes. All right, so the consent agenda passes 700. And it was both public and non-public of April 6th, is that correct?
Yes, we have to vote separately.
Voting separately, okay.
I have some modifications to the minutes. Okay. Under item 2, the vote to make Marcia our chair was 700. I think what's printed is 7007. And the nomination was for Charlie to be vice chair. I think it's written that he's nominated as chair.
Okay.
Yeah.
And on page 4, the first line, we have a capital A for accepted. I don't think we need that.
All right, anything else on the public?
That's all I have.
Okay. Um, so we need a motion to pass.
I move we approve the meeting minutes, both non-public and public for April 6th.
I think they have to be separate.
We have to do non-public separate.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I move we accept the meeting minutes for April 6th, non-public, as presented.
Public, you mean?
Public, you mean.
Okay, public, as amended.
As amended, okay.
Second.
Thanks Patty. Thank you Laurel, thank you Patty. All those in favor will call. Heidi?
Hi.
Patty?
Hi.
Laurel?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. So that passes 700, and now, non-public motion.
I move we accept the non-public meeting minutes as presented for April 6th, 2020.
Thank you Laurel. Thank you Alicia. And roll call vote. Heidi?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Laurel?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes.
Charlie?
I'm staying.
Thank you, and I. So it passes 601. Okay. We're on to discussion.
Student representative.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Sorry, Patrick.
All right, hopefully you guys can hear me better now.
Yeah, that's good, thanks.
So as you can see here, we have the form that we threw together. We just, we just threw some ideas up on the board here for, that we think people would be interested in. The first one being which video games, which would be my, my realm of expertise. We could set up something that a lot of people would be able to join and we would all be able to play together. We could all, I don't know how we would be able to make it education-based, but we could try, or we could not make it education-based and just have fun as a school. The next idea we had was a virtual talent show. I stole this idea from the rec department. But the idea of it would be that we would have students send in small videos of them doing their own talents, and then we would have someone edit that video together and make ourselves a virtual talent show, basically. Kind of like a compilation of students' talents. And then we also had the idea of a, of an online trivia show. I have no idea how we would make that work. I've, but we could try doing some kind of trivia show. And we also have an option for, if you, if you're not interested, because there are going to be some bummer's who are going to be like, nah, I don't want to do anything. And then we have, so, and then our last little question is if anyone has any ideas of their own. Now, we did try to think inside of the box, and by inside the box, I mean events that you could do inside your home. I have been getting requests to do things like go to like a drive-in movie theater as a group and like do some things like outside your home, which I would be more than happy to try to put together, but I didn't know if you guys would want to do something like that.
Well, um, I, I don't know about a school-related event. We'd have to talk with administration. But is there some sort of an outdoor event that everyone can participate in, not necessarily together, but working toward a common goal? Whether it's, I don't know, physical well-being or beautification of your neighborhood, that, that translates into trash pickup.
It's Thursday, Wednesday, or Tuesday.
Or, or how many birds can you see? I don't know, something that gets everyone outside to doing something maybe at the same time, but not necessarily together.
I suspect that there may be some guidance coming forth in the next couple of weeks on appropriate and safe ways for certain outdoor gatherings. I don't know that that's true, but certainly, you know, without that, we probably wouldn't want to do something. But, oh.
I don't know, I was, I was just given the suggestion from some students, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
Good.
That's our idea, that, that's our idea. We also have a form together, not, that's not the thing I need to show, but we also have a form that we're going to send out to seniors regarding graduation, and sort of things we would have to work on for that, like the class quote and the class song.
Right.
Good.
That's terrific.
That's about all I have to report.
So Patrick, you're going to send this out as a survey?
Uh, yes.
Great.
And hopefully I'll be able to get Mr. Blanchard to make that announce, make an announcement about that over his Twitter.
Okay, got it. Oh, Marcia is muted. So Patrick, is this something that's going to get emailed to all the students? Is that how this would work?
I think so. I haven't actually ever sent a Google form to people before, but hopefully we'll be able to figure that out. And yeah, it should be something that gets sent to all the students. The graduation one would be only sent to seniors, but, but the school event one would be sent to the entire school.
Okay, awesome.
So you're going to have, your next step is you're going to have some conversation with Mr. Blanchard, is that correct?
Yes, that is, well, my idea of the next step. We had Antonio still need to talk that through, but.
Okay.
Well, yeah, but that's all we got for you tonight.
Sounds good.
Thanks for working on that, Patrick.
No problem.
Yeah, and thanks for taking the lead on the, the graduation survey as well.
Yep, we thought, we thought it was an event, so might as well throw it in there.
Definitely.
Yep. And again, being in touch with Mr. Blanchard and whomever else traditionally is involved with the graduation. I also know that there were some community members. There we go. Had expressed an interest in supporting the seniors as well. So that might be an interesting.
Is there any way I can be put into that parent group of classes 2020? That would be, that'd be really helpful.
Um, it's, well, to my knowledge, there isn't an actual group that's called that, but I've seen like on Facebook where people are, were talking about how can we support our seniors? How can we make it special for them?
Marcia, there was an email that went out from Mr. Blanchard earlier today that designated that group. So, yeah, it's, but I think Patrick, you could probably message them and they'll, they'd let you in. And I think it definitely getting all of the teachers and together with you and everyone would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep. So yep, me and Antonio will be more involved in this kind of stuff. If, and if you need us for anything else, feel free to, feel free to ask.
Patrick, you can also ask your mom, according to Coral Gallagher.
Invite you.
She's sitting right next to me.
Wonderful. Okay, thanks very much Patrick and Antonio.
No prob, he's not here.
He's not here? Well, send, send our thanks.
We will. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna head out for tonight with that.
All right, thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you, Patrick.
And I'll see you all, I'll see you all next Monday.
No. I don't think we have a board meeting.
I don't think it is next Monday.
Oh, come on. You know we're gonna have one.
Please.
Not one scheduled yet.
But yeah. Matter of time.
And May, May 4th is the next scheduled, May 4th, Monday, two weeks.
Okay. Can we go that long? I don't know. Okay, moving on. The calendar. So Ruben, you've already discussed some things with us. You've got us kind of started. But.
Yeah, just again, just really briefly, last board meeting, we had a draft calendar up there that was, that represented basically what we had that more or less this current year. It starts, you know, just the week before, it started just a week before Labor Day and then had a little bit of a shorter time the following week after Labor Day. All the same sorts of vacations and, and of course, any of the days that we have elections, those are, have to be either days off, well, they're days off for students. And so, you know, that's, that's what was, it was a basic calendar that was presented. Again, briefly, the JREA Leadership Group and myself and Kelly Markot met, had a really great discussion for about 45.
Uh-oh. Frozen. Oh.
Five minutes or so, and do you hear me?
You keep freezing on mine. I don't know if that's happening for other people.
Yeah, I think it's everybody.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll do my best. Just keep on telling me if I freeze. So we basically, I can't remember which member it was, one of the teachers, I believe, the teacher from RMS had indicated, you know, we just need to do what's best for our kids. And we believe that getting, not having them have to be pushed into the summer was the way to go. And so, you know, what it, what it means is if we start earlier, that means teachers start earlier. And I think that right now, anyway, the conversation is, is that is something that people are certainly willing to do to make a calendar that is going to be beneficial to all. And it's still, it's still more or less meets the criteria that we, with the agreement that we have with our CTE programming by ending at the exact same time or within a day of the Messinic calendar.
Okay.
And again, starting a week earlier, if we were to do something like this, starting a week earlier than the other group would just give us an opportunity to make sure that our CTE course that people come to and that we have in our own school is all situated, since we have some changes that are coming to that course. And so it doesn't impact the other schools negatively.
Okay, so last week, when we had our board meeting that was not a regularly scheduled meeting, but a meeting, someone at that point had brought up, you know, the school calendar and wanting us to take time. And we told them that we would have that discussion now and that they could take that week to send in emails to Nick or to yourself about the calendar and anything suggestions or that type of thing. Is there anything there that will impact this calendar that we should, or, you know, that they're suggesting or anything?
Do you want me to answer that?
I, Nick forwarded those suggestions to us. And there were a couple that I thought were pretty terrific. One being if a voting day is not a professional development day, why not have remote learning on that day?
So I guess I have a question around if, if something like that were to happen. By contract, there's a certain number of professional development days, correct? And so we would put the professional development day somewhere else within the calendar?
Well, I think that this particular year, there's more voting days than usual.
Okay.
Because of New Hampshire primaries.
Okay.
So I think, I think there's a primary actually in September.
Yeah, I think so.
So.
There's three voting days. One in September, there's a voting day in November, and then one in March.
So usually the voting day in November and the voting day in March is slated to be a professional development day. Which I think is what's shown here.
Right.
But the one in September isn't designated as such.
That is correct. It's an extra day that we certainly, you know, comes around every once in a while.
Every two years, we have three. Every other year, we have one.
So that could be an opportunity to have remote learning instead of transporting children to, well, instead of not having school.
And Laurel, I, I agree that would be a good opportunity to use a remote learning day. In the suggestion, it also mentions teacher workshop days and I don't, you know, they can't do two things, can't be in two places at once. So I, I think for voting days, it's, it's certainly an option, but and then I, as far as snow days go, I, I'd like to have more conversation about that in general and just what our sort of moving target date at the end of the calendar has always been. Is there a way we can create a calendar and actually have a final date and stick to it unless there's some really crazy.
Like some virus or.
Something like the ice storm. Or some virus. Let's hope we don't do this again, but you know, something really beyond a typical year.
Heidi, it's quite difficult for me to hear you.
Is it?
I, I turned my volume up.
Oh, okay.
Can everyone else hear me? Do you want me to repeat what I said?
I, I could hear you, but it was hard. It was pretty low.
So I'm saying I can understand where remote learning could be used on something like a voting day, but not a teacher workshop day. And the other thing I said was that I would like to just have more discussion about what our makeup policy is for snow days at the end of the school year. And we've always had the moving target for making up those snow days. So do we consider doing remote learning or, you know, is there an alternative to making up all of our snow days? Did you hear that?
Yes, thank you.
Good points. Very good.
How difficult would it be for staff to really, across the district, to be ready with two days or one day's notice, depending on the weather, to be prepared to execute remote learning?
It seems to me that that might be tricky. And very time-consuming for teachers to, with very little time, really create all of that work as, I mean, I guess comparing to what we're currently doing. It seems that, that there wouldn't be a lot of time that they would have to make that happen. So I think it's a good idea. I guess I don't really have a good understanding of whether it can really work.
I think we also have to consider certain, certain children are not necessarily going to have their parents home, younger students with their moms and dads side by side, helping them to do this on a typical, you know, snow day or.
Right. I mean, some students may find themselves with some kind of daycare situation where they wouldn't have the option.
Well, and I see some comments here in the chat that are relevant to this, so I don't know if Nick wants to read them or we all can look at them.
Well, in summary, you know, talking about, there's several things. Talking about technology, certainly Chromebook policies, what students have access to for technology. Also, we, through this timeframe, even though we're doing a great job through this timeframe and our teachers and associates are doing an amazing job, they, you know, it's, it's not like it's been easy, especially with the students who do not have access to the internet. And so we know after looking at trying to get some hotspots with Verizon, well, Verizon doesn't get picked up in a portion of our town, those hotspots are useless. So there are areas that are just really very difficult zones. And so those students are at a bit of a disadvantage. There are other schools who do implement this. You know, maybe that could be spoken with. Kier Sars was the one who really started it all off. Jerry Free was the principal during that timeframe or the superintendent during that timeframe who enacted that blizzard bag thing that we had heard. And it's actually what the emergency rule that allowed us to do this was based off of. So most schools who, and there aren't many who do it, who do the blizzard bag thing, but most schools who do use it and have been successful, find it, find a way to make sure that it's just a continuation of what you're already doing and not something special. So that's the trick, is to make that happen. And that's, you know, that's, that takes work to do.
And having been in this school a little bit more this year with clubs, it seems to me that there are some staff that look as forward to a potential snow day as the students do.
Probably a lot of parents who do as well.
Well, I, that was sort of a cultural piece that I think comes up too, that, you know, snow days, especially for elementary age students, I think it's really important for them to go outside and play. So I would hate, I don't know, I wouldn't like to see that tradition go away, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's always the idea of, you know, if we find ourselves heading towards double digits of snow days, maybe we want to think about some other options, but.
Ruben, so can you talk about?
I don't think that we should out of hand discard any kind of remote learning or blizzard bags at this point in time, all right? I would like to see us look into having, having the experience that we've had doing remote learning to see if there is something that we can do. And, and because what we're going to end up doing is if we just go ahead and take our snow days, we're going to be back where we were before with running into late June and all the problems that's associated with that.
It's true. So, you know, we could discuss this probably until the cows come home. But.
I think the point is it's brought up and it's, it's a good thing to have as a discussion.
Yeah, I think we need more.
Teachers need to be.
It's not, it's not something that's going to impact the calendar.
Right. Well,
Not, not, no, not, not for the purposes of this calendar, no. I think it would be helpful to maybe get some more information about how, how other districts are implementing the, the basic blizzard bag idea, I guess, maybe to sort of guide our discussion as we continue to talk about this. And just maybe some more information around the idea might be helpful.
Should we consider requesting that September 7th? 7th? No, sorry.
The voting days?
Yeah, September 8th, be a remote learning day.
And try it out as, as a scheduled one and then see.
Schedule remote learning day.
Also, would we do the November date as well?
Well, that is a professional development.
Professional development day, yeah.
No, I think, because I have another meeting this week with the association and we have these, you know, ideas right here. We can, you know, have that conversation with them to see you know, the likelihood of that or whether that's going to, you know, be a really strong way to go.
So is the hope that at our next meeting, which would be what Nick, May 4th, that then we would have a calendar that, you know.
We'd have a proposal.
Right, that all parties have kind of had, stakeholders have had some input on and we could go forward?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. So we'll just kind of hold on that one until.
Yeah, I think you do see out of these, these two drafts, you know, what you didn't see is you didn't see a change to February break or April break. There, you know, some parents did email and say, hey, why don't we just have one? You know, that's a discussion that I think has been going on in the state of New Hampshire for a bit of time. It certainly would be causing a significant problem with our partners in the ATC program. It has also been my experience that to not have February break is a mistake from a health standpoint. We do see, you know, the gradual decline in students coming to school due to illness and then it increases after February break.
Attendance improves.
Attendance improves.
Right.
Not illness increasing.
No, right, exactly. Right, sorry.
Oh.
And.
Go ahead Charlie. Yep, go ahead Charlie.
Yeah, there's one other thing I like to look at. It's not going to impact the calendar, but there are some days labeled E, three of them, where we have early release for the elementary. And I would like to, to, to understand why we can't just have early release for everyone. And the reason I say that is because we have some households where both parents work and the older sibling has to care for the younger ones. So and also we have the, the, the busing thing. So. and also we have the, the, the busing thing. So, you know, from my perspective, if, if from, it wouldn't hurt to look at if releasing everyone early on those three days.
Well, the, you know, we're still having some conversations around early releases. The, you know, to make sure that we have those defined, still part of those calendar discussions. And I think that certainly we can add the conversation about early release being for the entire district, if that's something that we move forward and do. Just as the rationale for why it was only elementary in the suggestion was, one, the, you know, the high school needs to have more hours in the elementary school, but two, the the middle school, high school is set up in a ways that they have more regular collaboration time. Whereas the elementary, it's much more difficult to do that with the types of schedules and the type of setup that we have at an elementary school. And so we were trying to provide that more for the elementary. But again, still conversations about what that would look like and what the purpose of that would be entirely.
Yes, I, I understand that, but I'm, I also understand that a day and a half of collaboration for the high school and middle school wouldn't hurt either.
Oh, no, it never hurts. It's, it's a.
And from an hours perspective, I think we've got plenty of hours.
We're fine. We're fine from the minimum standards.
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I want to guard against going to minimum hours. Those are the minimum standards and I think that we are not a minimum standards kind of district. We're better than that. Just.
And so what she's referring to is the state minimum standards for our, because we're a school district that has, that has decided to use hours. 945 is the minimum for elementary in a year, 945 hours and 990 hours is the minimum for secondary.
And I personally don't think that it's ours that's the standard. I think it's what you accomplish in those hours.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, definitely, in a truly competency based system, yeah, personalized competency based system. If you, you know, once you're at that point, it's about, it's all about the learning and less about the time.
So the shift is.
It still doesn't change the fact that the state would mandate that you get the minimum number of hours, but anyway.
Oh, absolutely not. And I'm not proposing that we do the minimum hours. I'm just suggesting that we look at the possibility of the three early release days.
Sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we are going to leave this discussion point, I wonder if we should not entertain public comments on this one agenda item now?
We can do that. I, I mean, it's either way, the comments are going on to the people who are having the discussion and what will be input to the proposal, but we can all hear them, sure.
Are you saying that you want me to read out some of these comments?
That's fine. We'll, we'll do the comments that are directly related to the calendar. We'll hear those, take them under advisement and hopefully next time we'll have a proposal that we're ready to vote on.
Okay. So let me find where this starts. All right, so Sheila Nichols pointed out that remote learning does mean that students do need technology. So that's certainly something that we do need to consider moving forward is, you know, just the technological needs. Laura Harding says that because our students don't take their Chromebooks home, normally it is more of an issue making sure they take them. And so again, maybe some need to be adjusted. That was also echoed by Aaron Chamberlain saying that students are not normally allowed to bring Chromebooks home. Carrie Swift says that her, that she and her kids do love their snow days, so some support from both students and staff. K dot Sullen, Rinj.
Sullen.
Yep.
Sullen.
Okay.
Kim Sullen.
Rinj will begin to get an upgrade, I believe, in September, so some internet issues may be addressed because of that. Also, just addressing some of the potential technological advances in Rinj. What about if the snow day work is given a few days to get completed and not just in that one day? Carrie Swift says she's heard of other districts can do blizzard bags only after a certain number of snow days. Heather Dean, if teachers were given time to prepare for snow days during workshop days in the beginning of the year, then it would be helpful if remote learning has to go in place. If September 8th is going to be a remote learning day, then it will be crucial for teachers to have time to prepare ahead of time, possibly the August PD days. Allison Mayer, I believe, is the last one? Mark, sorry about that. I think it would be challenging to do remote learning so early in the year, especially with younger students. Aaron Chamberlain agrees with that. Sheila Nichols says, early release days do take away from instruction time for elementary students. And then Carrie Swift, early releases would make it harder for after school activities and athletics to meet at the middle high school. So those are the comments that we've received thus far through the chat feature. Just some remote learning.
Okay, so a lot of that stuff we had touched on, but now we have, you know, more perspective and, okay.
Yeah, that was great.
So we'll have a proposal next time, providing everything goes as planned, which we know, no, things don't always go as planned. But next time we'll have a proposal. And unless there's any closing comments on that, let's move on. I'm not hearing anything, so, okay. Um. So the financials. The district financial reports.
Okay, so I guess I'll talk about where we're at right now. So when this was done, it was done for the period ending April 10th, so that I could get it to the board in time. So since then, things have changed a little bit more, so we have almost $200,000 more in unspent due to a lot of purchases getting closed for those that we won't need through the end of the year, or transportation being a significant portion of that. So when you're looking at that number, it's going to be pretty high this year as a result of the remote learning that we're going through. There are some items in the budget, though, that will be getting spent, so I'll address some of those. We have a property purchase line of $200,000 from a warrant article last year. That will be carried forward again next year, so you'll want to back out $200,000 from that number of, of what's going to be remaining. We also have some facility storage building expenses that haven't been encumbered yet. I'm not sure if we'll end up spending all of it, but we're looking at about $100,000 still of anticipated money that we were looking to spend on that. We have some architectural services that we're looking to get for $37,500 at a minimum. We also have two warrant articles that were on the ballots this year for $300,000 in total if there was a surplus this year, so we would want to take the $300,000 out of that bottom line number. And then we have the two budget transfers that was, were presented to the board tonight for the Pratt curtains, lights and sounds, $26,400. And the SCU door for $35,000. We're also hoping to get some tennis court resurfacing done, approximately $25,000 if we're able to get them scheduled. So that comes out to about $725,000. So you would take out of, right now we're looking at $1,579 as of today. So that would leave us with another $856,000. On top of that, I know there's some other purchase orders that still need to get closed or adjusted. We have gasoline. We should see another $25,000 in savings for gasoline alone for the busing. We have more transportation expenses that I think we have some very small miscellaneous items. We were looking to close out some invoices in March, so that's probably going to be about 20 more thousand along with some other transportation. So bottom line, we're looking at probably about $900,000, give or take. We do have some staff coming on board at the end of the year, so salaries and benefits will come out of that.
So has special ed, have the special education been assessed for non-salary expenses?
What do you mean assessed? I'm sorry.
So, I mean, there are a number of POs issued
Right.
for the entire year, but things have changed this year, so has there been an assessment of how those are going to, whether, that they're fully encumbered when they're issued, correct?
Correct.
Have any of those been adjusted?
Well, we've had a lot of the transportation ones that were adjusted, the out of district transportation. All of those have already been adjusted. So I think that was between my April 10th report and today's number. That's why it increased almost 200,000 more. As far as any other services, I'd have to ask, but I've asked all of the principals and department heads to review all of their purchase orders. I asked them a few weeks ago to make sure they got everything closed out as much as possible. We are going to be closing out POs in general for the beginning of May, so staff won't be able to enter any more purchase orders unless authorized by the superintendent. So we should, we should have everything pretty much buttoned up within the next week or so.
Okay. Are there other questions for Carrie?
Yeah, Carrie, we have a rainy day fund carryover. How much is that?
$250,000.
So that's.
Add that back and then you would, if you voted on it again, you would take that back out again.
Right, so we're down to five, four, 475?
That's not part of this number, is it?
No, it's, it's not. That's completely separate. That's not built into the budget.
Okay. So you got, all right, there is one thing that I'd suggest, and that is have Mike look at the, if there's things that we could purchase to help with the technology for remote learning. For, for example, it might help if we had more chargers because we had students who didn't take chargers at home with them and, and so they had to come pick up chargers. And we should have the capability of charging the Chromebooks in, you know, in the, in the facility, even if somebody forgets their charger at home.
And.
Yeah, and we also have some grant funding that we are able to access that can also support some of that work as well. That would not impact our
Budget.
Budget, yeah.
So, and that grant funding is from where?
Well, some of it, I mean, we haven't received some of it yet. First of all, they've loosened up some of the rules. I have that information, got to read through it a little bit more, but they've loosened up some of the rules around Title IV and Title II with what we can spend. And so we already have those grants and those are just, those are title grants. And then we are slated to receive about 80 to 85% of our Title I 2019 allotment for for our current situations. So that will roughly be, you know, two, between two, depends which year they include as 2019, but between 220 to 260,000.
So is that for next year or is that just a, I'll call it a kiss?
Yeah, I have to find out the timeframe for that specific one that is coming. Obviously, we can't, you know, we're going to need to utilize it for, first of all, any expenses that we had that we weren't quite certain, you know, we were going to, you know, be responsible for. So we do have some things that we're continuing to pay for that we perhaps otherwise wouldn't have, like, done completely. So that grant can help support that. The grants in general, the guidance that I've received is that they're actually extending the, the length or the life of the grants for some of the older grants anyway, for another year, so we have a little bit of time.
And if it's Title I, does that mean it can only be used for Jeffrey Elementary?
Oh, oh, no, it will, they wouldn't be Title I funds. They would be very, the funds have not as many limitations to them. They're, they're federal funds. They're only allotted to school districts on the formula of what was used for Title I. So they're not Title I funds. They can be used as Title I or special IDEA. So for special education, if we needed to do some more work in the summertime for students, more tutoring, more anything like that, so we could utilize them in a, in a wide variety of ways for technology purchases.
Is there any, I, I'm sure that you're anticipating that there will be some sort of support required during the summer for a number of students?
Yeah, I think we want to continue to support, you know, as many students as possible who, you know, usually run pep camps and all these other sorts of things. And so we would want to be able to do that, whether, you know, again, like the commissioner said earlier, I talked about the fact that he indicated plan for both, either in person or remotely or a blend thereof. And so we certainly want to be preparing for that.
Is there any opportunity to use this year's funds to support that summer work because of what's happened in this school fiscal year?
That, I don't believe we would be able to utilize, the, there was a, there was a bill in the legislature that was, they were trying to push through the ability to carry over more money. I don't think that has been pushed through. So we would not be able to utilize our current year's funds in this budget for, after July 1st, unless we are doing work, for instance, if we're, I don't know, building a pavilion somewhere and we've already started to, and I'm just making that up, that pavilion conversation, but we're building an object, a building somewhere. And we had already started, we have, you know, we started the construction, we already have everything with, you know, under contract and so forth, prior to that date.
Right, that's the sort of standard operating procedure.
Yeah.
Okay. So, next question, when the board approved the roofing contract, I believe that the cost to perform the work exceeded the special warrant article.
Yes, it did.
And we voted to fund the difference through the building maintenance reserve trust fund.
That's correct.
Can we instead fund it through this year's operating budget?
Yes, the board could vote to do that. If the board voted to have it come out of this year's budget, we certainly could. I would need to do a budget transfer. So if the board could authorize that as well, I could.
Can, should we do that right now?
If it funds around. Sure, that would be great.
Okay, then I move, we authorize Carrie to affect, Carrie and Ruben to effective budget transfer to fund the amount for the roofing contract that exceeds $190,000 from this year's operating budget instead of from the building maintenance reserve trust fund. I believe it's like 25 grand, right?
Yes.
I'll second Laurel's.
Okay, so Laurel's made a motion and Charlie, you've seconded it?
I did.
Okay, and we're changing a previous decision and using the money instead of from the trust from the current budget to pay the difference of the, what we've exceeded from the warrant article, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we can do a roll call vote? Heidi? Heidi? And Patty?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
And I say aye as well? So, it passes 7-0-0. Is there any more discussion about that? Okay.
One more question about possible expenditures this fiscal year. I don't remember off the top of my head what we had in the budget for technology purchases for next fiscal year. Ruben or Carrie, do you have some sort of an order of magnitude number?
For next fiscal year?
Yep.
It's going to take me a minute, hang on.
I mean, we, we could do this at the next meeting, but we're at May 4, and you want to close POs out.
Yes, that's correct.
I think that there were maybe some switches? Maybe some bigger ticket items that Mike was planning on?
Well, that, and I think he was planning on the phone, too, the phone system.
Phone system. I don't know if you can get that done before June 30.
That might not be possible.
So, the phone, yeah, the phone system, when we proposed it in the budget, was to do 70,000 for the one district, sorry, one of the buildings, which is the middle school, high school, and then for the following year, we would do that same amount.
Is that buyout even in process? You're going to want that changeover to happen this summer, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Has it been put out to bid?
I don't believe it has been put out to bid. Mike was working on that. I'll check in with him.
Well, my suggestion would be that if, if we could spend some money for next year's technology purchases this year, it would make some funds available for additional support if needed over the summer or other unforeseeable things next year.
Good idea.
Yep.
I also wonder if we need to assess whether the district should have hotspots that can be sent home with certain students? Like taken out like a library book?
Just like they do with their Chromebook if they have to take it?
Just a thought.
All right. See you making notes there, good? All right, anything else?
Thank you.
On this?
Having a hard time looking things up as I'm on my screens while this is going on. But I think we reduced Mike's replacement cycle line quite a bit, if I remember right. It's only around 37,000, and I think it's supposed to be higher, so there may, may be items he can purchase this year.
All right. Great, that'd be great. Okay. So, we're ready to move on to the food service?
No, I have one question.
Okay, sorry, Charlie, go.
Carrie, could you talk a little bit about your revenues and credits? You're talking about a $2.6 million difference?
And the revenues, yes, just for right now, that's because we haven't received the rest of the assessment money or the school building aid, but those will be coming in, so there shouldn't be a shortfall in revenues.
Okay, that's what I wanted to verify. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay. So, food service.
So, food service, unfortunately, we didn't have marches available by tonight's board meeting. I think that would have been important with everything that happened in March. So, I'm only able to, to show you where we stood as of the end of February. I'm not sure what the impact to going to remote learning is going to have on our numbers as of March. We did have a week where no food service was, you know, no meals were served, and then we went to having pickup two days a week and, and busing some meals. So, it looks like that's going well, and as of this Friday, we're going to be able to start serving weekend meals to those families that want to sign up for it. But the impact to this is, is, I'm, I'm just not able to, to speak to that right now, because I don't know how it's going to affect the financials.
Are we receiving grant monies to help support this? We, we're not receiving any revenues for meal purchases, right?
That's correct. We are receiving, so we qualified for some programs because the state requested some waivers from the USDA. So, we do qualify for reimbursement for meals that are being served under the, it's called the Seamless Summer Program that we've qualified for under this coronavirus situation. So, we are getting federal reimbursement dollars for those meals.
So, we just don't know if that revenue offsets the cost of being incurred.
Correct, correct.
And we'll have a better handle on that through the end of March and April, when?
We, we should have had the numbers by today, but unfortunately, we didn't, so we should have them very soon, for March at least. Ringe, we weren't, didn't qualify for the, the free program for the meals until April. So, of the month of April, we'll qualify for Ringe, so that was good news. So, but I should have them at any point in time, so if the board wants, as soon as I get them, I can just forward them to the board members to take a look at.
Thank you, that would be very interesting.
That'd be good, yeah. All right, anything else for Carrie right now?
Thank you, Carrie. You're welcome.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right. So, board committee updates. Do we want to start with, we can start with facilities?
So, we've been working diligently to finalize the details of the facility's garage, coordinating electrical finishes, location, parking lot lighting, grading, et cetera, all that stuff. We've also been looking at and developing some RFPs for land management and forestry services. Given our land that's out on Route 202, we should pay a little bit of attention to it and take care of it. We're also developing a draft, I'll say, proposal for services for architectural and design build services. Not necessarily all in one package, but for some of our playing fields, which are in dire need of work. And some architectural and design work for the schools.
Okay. Any questions for Laurel on facilities, or for anyone that's on the facilities committee, not just Laurel?
I'd just like to say that I think our facilities committee is really doing a good job, because that's an area that we've neglected in the past, we put a little bit more focus on. And during this time, there's, they're meeting, and they're going after the, you know, the, the real issues that we have to address, and, you know, my hat's off to them.
Thanks.
Thanks, Charlie.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, Ruben, you had said that the education committee would be meeting maybe the end of this month or the beginning of the next month?
I'm going to send an invite, a couple different days, a little poll out to the committee to find out whether next week is good, if not, the following week.
Okay. Is there anything like on policy?
Yeah, so, we're going to be holding our policy meeting on the 28th.
Okay. And, well, we just heard financials, but financials, you'll be meeting again soon?
We should, yes. I would hope to schedule something in early May, if that works for the...
That would, that would be great, Carrie.
Goals.
Goals should probably meet. I think we're knocking the technology goal out of the park from last year, so do we get carryover for that accomplishment? Sorry, it's 8:30, I've been up since 5:00. The, I would say, that is not why I don't have a camera. The, we will get together, I promise. Charlie, John, we'll get together and we'll review where we stand for this last quarter.
Could we, could we perhaps have a status, our last meeting in May?
That'd be awesome.
Absolutely, it would be awesome. Yep.
Thank you very much, it would be terrific.
Am I forgetting something in terms of a committee?
Wellness.
Wellness. Wellness, sorry!
So, we met last week, and prior to our remote learning situation, we had been talking about trying to do something special for, in the month of May, because it is National Fitness and Sports Month. And so, we were hoping to do something along the lines of how a spirit week is done, to do a week where something special each day happens to highlight health and wellness. So, we're trying to plan to still do that, and to put some recommendations out to elementary, middle, high school for different ways they can focus on their physical wellbeing. So, right now, we have talked about doing that for the week of May 18 to the 22nd, and we're meeting again, I believe it's next week, we're meeting, I can't remember, but we're meeting soon, and we are going to continue to work on that. The other thing we've been talking about and working on in our last several meetings is, is working toward tracking student fitness. We know our plan is to start that with all sixth graders next year, and so, we've been coming up with a, a plan for how we'll be able to do that. And right now, we're discussing possibly having staff members work on creating fitness tracking log I have to, I need to get a little bit more information from the committee. We need to suss out how, how much time we really think that's going to take, and I've asked Ruben about that, if it's something that we could potentially have our physical ed teachers help work on, and then, you know, to do some of that work over the summer. And then, along with that, we're in the process of purchasing Polar Fitness watches that have heart rate monitors, and they're just, it's just the watch, it's not a heart rate monitor that goes around the chest, it's just a, a watch, and it has, would have the ability to track students' improvement, and then there's software that goes along with that, where teachers would be able to have all that data and work on those fitness goals. So, we're, so we're in the process of trying to really create a system that will work for tracking the fitness of our sixth graders to start, and then obviously, in the future, it will grow.
All right.
That sounds terrific.
Yeah, yeah, it's been fun to talk about.
All right, thank you. So, now, have I forgotten any committee? All right. Okay, then, we're up to public comments, too.
All right, so I haven't seen anything come in yet, I guess, just in case anybody didn't hear the beginning, you know, little spiel. We do have the group chat option. You're more than welcome to send a message in through that, first and last name, and where you're from, would be great. You can also raise your hand through the particip, the participant window. If you do that, I can unmute you, and you can give a verbal comment. Also, I will send out my cellphone number again through chat, which is 603-933-0973, and you can send me a text message, and we can do it that way as well.
Okay. Give it a second.
You can also send Nick a smiley face emoji.
Yeah, reactions. Don't they have thumbs up down there, too, and? Okay.
Anything, but I guess in the event that anybody ever, you know, puts in a comment, and it comes in a little too late for public comments, we can always, you know, we're just like, we make sure that if a comment comes through, it will be read by the board, and, you know, we don't want to make people just get dropped out.
Right, okay, thanks. Board matters.
There's something I'd like to bring up. So, in October, we received a draft technology plan. And I gave Ruben some comments, and met with Ruben and Mike briefly about those comments. I would like to help in any way I can to move it forward, so that we have a plan. I wonder if I should share those comments with the other board members?
That would be...
I guess that's a question for Ruben.
Oh, I think that's fine, yeah.
But I think it's important that we finalize that document with the understanding that it's a working document. It doesn't mean that it's a plan that's cast in concrete, and we have to work to it, that it's, it can be malleable and change as events need it to change, but I think it's important that we finalize and have a plan.
Yep.
Okay, so I will send those comments off to other board members, and perhaps we can figure out during the course of the next two weeks how we can schedule the plan, to finish the plan.
Right. So, I mean, this may not make me very popular, but maybe we need to poll a couple people that want to just focus on that technology and just work on that and get it done, and then present it to the board.
Sure. Whatever.
I'll help you, Laurel.
Help me?
That was clever.
Aren't you? I thought you were leading this effort.
I'm willing to help any way I can. I'm not going to pretend to be super savvy about technology and, and education.
Charlie, I will give you a call. And Laurel, I'll, I'll, I'll help out, too, if I can.
Terrific.
Great, thanks, guys. We'll look forward to a plan. Are there other board matters?
I have one other that I'd like to mention. The New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project is a, is a group of people who have been looking at the changes in the school funding formula. We know that there were some big changes last year. It came several months after the start of the fiscal year, when the, the budget was approved. And some of our funding was restored, at least for the current year. But there's a lot more that's still up in the air and still under consideration. In particular, last year, we considered joining with Conval on their
Lawsuit.
Yeah, their lawsuit against the state. As many of you, or most of you probably know, at the Superior Court level, they did win their suit. The state has appealed it to the Supreme Court, and that is going through the system now. It should be interesting. I think it's something we should at least try to maintain level of awareness of. And going forward, you know, ask ourselves whether there's a point at which, you know, we want to be involved. Our reasons for not getting involved last year, I think we're okay, but, but they were partly having to do with timing. So at the very least, I think we should stay aware because the, you know, the issue is in flux. And I think no matter which way the elections go this year, I think both parties have an interest, both, you know, major parties have an interest in looking at where we stand and what should be done going forward. And just the last thing I'll say is the, the state, as a part of the budget agreement, set up a commission to study school funding. And they were meeting, I think on a monthly basis, and they're gonna resume meeting, but remotely, like everybody else. But they laid out a pretty substantial agenda of things that we're gonna look at. The agenda does include some options for input from school districts who have particular concerns. And I know our district, one of our concerns is the degree to which the cooperative school districts may not be served well by the funding formulas as they've been implemented. And I, I've at least sent that question in by email, whether or not that will have any impact on deliberations, I don't know. So just wanted to mention that and make sure that we're kind of staying aware of it as it goes forward.
Yeah, so John, is there, there's a website? Or?
Yes, yes, there is a website. In fact, I think they just went online. It's the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. And I'll be happy to send out this, their, one of their recent periodic emails for anybody who's, you know, not on that mailing list.
Yes, please.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, I'll, I'll send that out to the school board members at least.
And I think, you know, maybe this is something we need to check in on, you know, just, I don't know how frequent, are they meeting once a month? Is that what they're trying or what?
I, I believe so.
Okay, so it'd be great to just have, keep an update going on that. Because, yeah, that has been an issue in our district, so that would be great.
Sure.
Thanks. Other board matters?
There have been some questions about the last day of school this year raised.
Yeah.
And I wonder if the board should form an ad hoc committee to look into.
Yeah, well, we did say that the 12th would be the latest. And not knowing what the governor was gonna say, we wanted to leave flexibility. So that would be great, if we could have some stakeholder, you know, representative from these different stakeholders and a couple board members.
Stakeholders being members of bargaining unit and parents.
Bargaining units, parent, um, yeah. And we've talked, I think, a fair amount tonight about, you know, remote learning is difficult. It's challenging, but sometimes even within the special needs realm, that presents a whole nother host of challenges. So I would want to kind of look at that and see also how their needs have been met versus what's traditionally happening within the classroom and, and just see.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a suggestion. And that, that Ruben and Marcia form an ad hoc committee and report back to the board with, say, some suggestions, recommendations relative to those issues next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And, and by next meeting, just because we could have a next meeting sooner, you never know.
May 4.
The May 4 meeting.
May 4.
Right.
All right. So anything else with board matters? Got quite a bit. Okay, um, we have future items. I think throughout this, we've come up with quite a few future items. But is there anything that hasn't come out already in our meeting tonight?
I move adjourn.
Well, I want to just double check with Nick to see if anyone has written in.
I don't have anything.
Okay, so Laurel, you moved to adjourn?
I do.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we got lots of seconds.
4.
And, okay, all right, so we are adjourned. Thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good week.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Bye.
Good night.